El Lurado en La Batana. Uh, you can find this same report that I'm gonna read here on the website under the B and C minutes. The San Felipe Rotary Club and the Minneapolis University Rotary Club, Minneapolis, Minnesota, are sponsoring a hearing loss treatment program that will provide testing and treatment for hearing loss, including hearing aids, here in San Felipe. This project will be administered at the Biomedical Clinic and Central Day Salute. The project target date is for October, if we start earlier. But right now, we're looking at the target date of October. Hearing tests and hearing aids will be provided on a sliding fee schedule based on the ability to pay. No one will be denied service. Due to their inability to pay. Cost of hearing aids and services for individuals who are able to pay will be significantly lower than US prices. Technicians will be hired to administer the hearing tests and fit the hearing aids. Test results will be reviewed via the internet by audiologists in the United States. The audiologist will recommend the appropriate hearing treatment, including hearing aids as needed. Technicians will be guided by the audiologist to meet the patient's hearing needs. Follow-up will be provided as needed. There will be audiologists coming down here to train those people that will be doing the hearing tests here in San Felipe. A public education program to educate the community on the risks, consequences, and prevention and treatment of hearing loss is also part of the project. This is an international rotary project through the rotary process of obtaining matching funds and at the district and at rotary international level. There is a total of over $140,000 that was generated for this project through the Minneapolis, Minnesota Rotary Club, University Rotary Club, San Felipe District, and international grants that we will able to secure. These funds will be used to purchase equipment, hearing aids, supplies, and other project expenses. The goal is to develop a self-sustaining hearing project here in San Felipe through continuing through the one-year anticipated date of the ending of the project. If anybody has any questions about it, I can answer them at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
It is very... It makes me very happy to see how the clubs in San Felipe develop these kind of programs to help the community. So this is a benefit of each one of us. It's great to hear that. Thank you very much, Z. Our second speaker guest of today is Mrs. Dora Sagon, and she represents Mexico Immigration Services. And she's here to answer questions about immigration processes in Mexico. If you have any doubts, please make your questions to her. Thank you, Gary.
Hi, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm gonna try to answer all the questions that you have about immigration. And I'm gonna follow some questions that allow me. So first of all, you're talking about visas every time. We don't spend visas. Um, consulate give visas to people. We give you a form, probably that's the... I mean, um, the name of the card that we give to foreign people, the name is FMM. It's a little card. Uh, that's good for people who can come to visit just for a few days. Just, I'm saying this just to make you see the difference, okay? Okay, because you were talking about different kinds of visa for Americans and Canadians, uh, to, I mean, for property owners. You can, I mean, I'm not gonna talk about own property because it's not to me, that question. But, um... To come and visit Mexico, um, this, like tourists, you can get an FMM at the border, and it's good for 180 days, but it's only for one entry. When you leave Mexico, you must drop that paper at the immigration at the border. When you come again, you need to get another one. It's good for 180 days if you're gonna spend those six months here in Mexico, okay? Okay, another question is if a little kid, three-year-old kid, needs an FMM? Yes, only from two and under don't need an FMM. Um, if you can get an FMM in the United States? Yes, there's a website. And there you can get an FMM. But you need to pay that, you can pay that online. But when you come to Mexico, you must stop at the border and get the stamp. Since that day, it's gonna be good for 180 days. Okay, to live in Mexico as a temporary resident or permanent resident, the first step is go to the Mexican consulate in the United States. And you're gonna show your passport. They will ask for six months' bank statements. And they're gonna make a decision if they give it to you as a temporary or as a permanent. They are going to stamp a visa on your passport. When you come to Mexico, okay, the visa is good for six months. You have those six months to come to Mexico, stop at the border, at the immigration office at the border. And you're gonna show your passport, and then they will give you an FMM, but only good for 30 days. Those 30 days, you have that time to come to Mexico and start the process at the immigration office to get the temporary or resident card. But almost all the people who goes to the consulate, they in, they just need the FMM, the passport, and come to the office and right away we're giving you your card. No, you need to start the process here, submit an application, copy up your passport, your visa, show the originals, and write a letter on the application form, make a payment at the bank. With those papers, you're gonna submit, we're gonna give you a number, and you're gonna wait a few days to have ready the... To be on time to come to the office, bring your pictures, put fingerprints. And then we're gonna, um, process the information, and we're going to send your papers for your card to be printed. And then you can come to the office and pick up your card, temporary or resident. And that's the process to get a card. The fee, okay, for temporary for one year is $3,596 pesos. And to become permanent is $4,528 pesos. Okay, so do you have any questions?
Yes. What if you forget to turn in your FMM when you return to the United States?
I'm sorry.
What if you forget to turn in your FMM and return back to the United States?
You must drop it. If you want to re-entry, I mean, you're gonna have to show the other one and get a new one, but you're not supposed to do that. I mean, I know it's hard for you to stop at the border and going out because there's a lot of people, there's no parking places, etc. But I hope we can help here, like, maybe box and room to drop the papers, but there's no way to do that.
Hi, I have a scenario. We just applied. Matter of fact, I'm gonna be picking up my card on Monday. On January 6th, we went in, and so many paperwork, we all consulted and everything. We came down here, we did all the initial paperwork. My husband's against God Academy on a Friday, because January 6th. We're still waiting to hear for his signature and immigrant. My card is ready. You just said a couple days. Now, again, January 6th, where we can get lost in the system.
Okay, sometimes the consulate, they don't register your visa on the system. And when I get your papers and I try to check your documents and I cannot see your visa on the system, I cannot give you the authorization. So unfortunately, it's a long process to go to Mexico, I mean, and wait until they give me an answer. Sometimes it's for some mistake that the consulate, uh, when they type your birthday, for example, they put the month, day, and year. And here in Mexico, it's day, month, and year. And because of that, I mean, sometimes I cannot, I cannot give you the authorization. I have to wait.
And in fact, we had a lawyer in the States, and we paid a lawyer in the States. And we came down here, since everything is in Spanish on document, we paid somebody else down here, and we paid two fees, and still that happened to us.
Yeah, that's probably a problem from the consulate, I mean, not the people that you hired to help you.
No, 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 it's okay. You made it sound like it was a couple days, but it's not a couple days.
Yeah, I mean, but if everything is, it's fine, three days, four days, probably, to get your authorization to put the fingerprints.
But no one can tell us what's happening. We just, we're just told we have to wait, we have to wait, we have to wait.
Did you come to the office?
Yes.
If you have any doubt, you can come on Monday. We're open 9:00 to 1:00.
I will be there to pick my card up, so my husband will come.
Okay.
Hello, is there a way when we're leaving Mexico and go back in the States, that we can just give the visitor visa to the customs agent? I mean, you gotta show her doctor's patient ID.
No, you need to leave it at the immigration office, with their agent from the immigration office.
Is there, okay, there's no way that we could do it in here in San Felipe?
No. No, because you're supposed to live in town, and we're not the end of the country. I mean, you need to be at the border.
Okay.
If you leave by plane, for example, yes, you're gonna drop it at the airport, because you're leaving Mexico from the airport.
If you have an immigrado card, do you have to upgrade to the permanent resident, or is immigrado card good?
It's still good, but some older offices, they don't recognize the old card. But it's good still, because has the, um, the code card? Yeah, it's good, but, I mean, a lot of people is changing because they're having problems in some other places that they don't recognize the old one. Not even the old old book, the FM2, used to be the immigrado, uh, book before. They don't recognize it.
Is there a cost involved for immigrado to get a permanent resident?
Yes, it's $1,144 pesos.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, um, how about people that have to go across the border every month for doctors appointments or shopping? They have to buy a new visa every time?
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. Uh, we have our permanent resident cards. Do they have to be renewed at a certain period of time?
No.
The United States is now issuing a passport card and a passport book. Will immigration accept the passport book, uh, I mean, pardon me, the card when making application?
Both, the book and the card.
You must provide?
No, 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 either or.
Either or. Thank you.
What happens if you come across the border and you didn't know anything about the getting a visa, and you haven't got one and you're down here? What do you do?
You must go back.
We're not going back till we leave.
I didn't hear that. There is no way we can give you one here, ma'am, unfortunately. We don't have any entry stamp because we're not the border. Only, as I told you before, at the airport.
Well, what do they do to you at the border if you don't have one?
We're not gonna do anything, I mean, we're not, I mean...
If you're in the United States and have a US passport, can you also give the resident card here if you have property here?
Uh, I, I, I don't understand the question.
You've become a resident of Mexico with resident card, and you still be, you live in the US, but you're living here too between two places for your benefits in the US.
Okay, um, you're supposed to live in Mexico almost full-time to have a permanent resident. But with the new law, they don't, I mean, they don't require us, uh, I mean, many people probably used to have the FM2. And the, um, the law said before that you must stay here at least nine months on a year. But with the new law, I mean, they don't require that way. But if you, some people, it's too obvious that they don't live here full-time. But if you get your permanent residence since the consulate, we cannot do anything. We must give you a resident, a permanent resident card. But we are checking, um, the addresses that you leave us. And we're going to ask when you, when you apply to become a permanent resident because you have four years living in Mexico consecutive, uh, we are going to check on houses because if you are not there, you just come like, I don't know, spring or something, we are, um, not giving permanent resident card to those people. You most, uh, wanted to return your card and go to the consulate, start all over again, or make another process, but that one, you need to let your, your card expire, pay a fine, and start here with us. But for me, it's better to go to the consulate and not, not pay the fine.
Is it easier to, a lot of people are going through lawyers to get their card. Is it faster that way?
No, same process. Okay, let me just say something about that. Many people who do paperwork for you, they tell you, if you come with us, it's gonna be faster. They charge you a lot of money, and that is not true. If you come to the office, number one, we're gonna check your papers, number one. And that's the way that we work. And as I told you before, sometimes the process, not because of me, because some other people who give me authorization to get your permanent resident, for example, sometimes they're not, I mean, allowed to do the signature right away or check the papers. That's why for some people, it takes longer than other people.
Are these rules, um, available on the internet? Um, so that we can download them on paper and read them in English?
Do the application yourself?
We just wanna know that we've got the rules straight. So I'm wondering if we can, if you're making it available on the internet so that we can download these rules and study them very carefully?
Okay, yeah, that's on the same page that I told you, but, uh, I think the law is not in Spanish. I mean, not in English.
So it's not in English?
No.
No?
Yeah, of course. That was so... I'm sorry, did you say last night? There's the answer.
What'd he say? What was the answer?
That US has all that other information in English, this gentleman here said. US dot com. Yes, only the, uh, the new border, they are open only the same hours that the US border is open. We have a essential pass that we have, and, uh, obviously, a US citizen passport. We also have permissives. Coming back into Mexico, we really get asked for any identification. Since the Trump, I guess, we are now being stopped and asked for papers.
Good.
And we always carry our passport with us, essential pass, and also permissive passport. And once they see them, they say, okay, go ahead. Now, are we just being picked out because of the problem that the US is having with immigration? No.
I'll just say right now, I didn't vote for him, so. And anyway, um, back to the visitor visa, um...
FMU.
FM, excuse me. Okay, so I'm going back from here home, and, you know, I forget to turn it in. And we come down every year and stop and get the visitor visa. Would there be some type of, oh, you can't come in because you didn't turn in your old one, or?
No, no.
Okay, so, so I can leave and then come back and say, hey, here's my old one, and then can I have a new one? I know that sounds silly to you, but I don't, I don't wanna...
Yeah, no, no, it's not silly, I mean, I know a lot of people do that because, as I told you before, there's no way that you can find a parking place to drop the FMN.
Yes.
But again, there's, there's nothing I can do unfortunately for me. If you drop it here and just you tell me you're leaving Mexico, I'm not, I mean, I'll believe you. I mean, you don't have to leave the card if you're not leaving.
Yeah, I, I understand now. Thank you.
Um, back on the FMM, if you have guests coming into Mexico for less than 72 hours, are they required to have an FMN?
All the people who cross the border to come to Mexico, they must have an FMN. The difference is if you say you're coming less than seven days, you're not gonna pay for it. But you must have one.
Okay, so they need to get it, but they don't pay for it for less than 72?
Yes, if you say at the border you're coming for less than seven days, you're not gonna pay. But you, you must have one.
Can they get that online?
Yes, online, uh, www.inm.gov.mx. And you can pay it online, uh, too, but when you come to Mexico, you must stop at the border.
You still have to stamp, stop and stamp. Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll send the email out, uh, in the website, the email will ask everybody, okay? Um, so, so my question is, you said for residency, you have to be here at least nine months out of the year. If you are a permanent resident down here, but you also have property in the US and you go up there occasionally, you live here, but maybe you have vacation property in Las Vegas, as an example, you go up there. What, what are the regulations concerning vehicles? I was told if you're a resident, you have to have Mexican plated cars down here, but if you own it in the US, you have to have US-plated cars. So can you, as a permanent resident, can you bring your car in with US plates? Or do you have to switch cars at the border? I mean, how does that work?
You know what? I don't suppose to answer that question because it's not, uh, you know, my... But sometime I read, uh, how do you say, um, on a newspaper, this, it was, it was a rumor that someone who do that kind of work give you guys, and you believe, but, yes, to be honest, because I saw that, that thing. So if you go to the, um, I don't know, the office for, um, for your plates, they're not going to require to have Mexican plates because you're free to have US plates or Mexican plates if you want to. Because you are US citizen, you don't have to change everything to Mexican things because you're living in Mexico.
Is there a difference between permanent residents and immigrados?
No, maybe it's the same thing. The difference, uh, with the new law, immigration law, we didn't have one before, until 2012. That's why they changed the name from immigrado to permanent resident. Now, there's no FM2, FM3, and immigrado, only permanent resident and temporary resident, or visitors.
Yes, what is the advantage or disadvantage to have dual citizenship instead of doing the FM3? Can you get dual citizenship?
Yeah, of course, if you have your permanent resident card for two, two years, you can go to the, uh, I don't know how to say, Relaciones Exteriores in Mexicali, and you can, um, ask for your, I mean, dual citizenship. That's another process. I don't know the requirements. I don't know any of the things that, that they ask, but yes, you can get both. But you must have your permanent resident for two years to apply.
Okay, one short question. Immigrados, when applying for the permanente, do they have to go to the consulate also?
No, if you have your immigrado card, you just, uh, start the process. I mean, it's another application form, some other requirements. And with your immigrado card, you can get a permanent resident, paying 100, I mean, $1,144 pesos, something.
Um, once you have your paperwork all done, do you have to call to make an appointment, or can you walk into Collexico?
No, you just walk in. You don't need an appointment.
Okay, one thing they did say in the US was that you have to make an appointment. Some places you don't have to, and I was just wondering if yours you did, if you did not.
But consulate is in the United States, but it's Mexican consulate in the United States. So you don't need an appointment.
Okay, and then I, I went on the US website, there, all the information is in the US in English, if anybody wants it. All these questions, they answer on there. The only question that I didn't answer on there was, once you could call for an interview, if you're not here, let's say you're gone for three or four months, can you postpone your interview and come back later?
Which interview?
Once after you get your permit and you stamp your, they stamp your card, your temporary, you have to do an interview, don't you?
No. No.
Oh, okay.
Only I've been talking to people if you need an interview.
I think that's for the century past, you have to have an interview. For the century past, I'm here.
Can you talk about the amnesty program that's available?
The name is Programa de Regularización Irregular. And this program is not open all the time. The, uh, there was like a two or three years they haven't opened this program. It's for people who comes from... It's for people who comes from countries like, I know far away, like Honduras, Salvador. That people who comes to Mexico to get a better life probably, to cross the border, to go to US. And they all stop in Mexico, I mean, waiting for that moment. They don't have money, they don't have passport, they don't have any, any paper with them. And that program is for that people who cannot go to their countries back. I mean, like, yeah, that people who comes with no money. But like you, you can come and go to US whenever you want. And that's why that program is for those kind of people.
I talked to a lawyer and he said that in the rules for the amnesty, that there was nothing about Americans not being allowed to get it.
No, but one of the requirements is to check the, I don't know how to say, but you're coming and going to the United States. And trust me, if I put your name on the system, you're gonna show there. So that shows that you can go to your country since January 2015 until this day, you're coming and going free. So I mean, you don't have a restriction to come and go to the United States. So if I saw that your name on that, on that... Yes, on that database, and I can see that, that, I cannot give you authorization for that program. I mean, a lot of lawyers wants, what they need, and they're gonna tell you that, but you're gonna hear. But there's on the website, it's actually all the requirements and explanation for that kind of program.
Good morning. We're up here. Been putting the snippets together. I've got visitors coming from England. Can, judging by what's been said, can I get the forms offline before they get here? Have them all filled out so that when I come through the border in Mexicali, I can take them in, get them stamped for the people, they're only here for a month. And then they'll come down to San Felipe and then go back a month later. Can I do that with the forms from online?
Yeah, you can get it from online.
Okay, and then just take it in as I cross the border and it'll be stamped?
I get it, yes, I get it.
And then they won't have to come back for any of that stuff again?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to permanent residency. If you get notified for signature and fingerprints, and that period's 90 days that you need to come do the signature and fingerprints, what if you had to be back in the States for that period of time? Do you have to start that process all over?
No, there's the answer, I mean, that, for permanent resident. Why you're not going to be able to come and put fingerprints? If you're a permanent resident, you live in Mexico. So at least you will be able to come and put the fingerprints. I mean, if the person that you want to get the card, I mean, at least give us time to do that for you.
All right, guys, one more question and then on the end, she'll answer all the questions. One more question.
You may have covered this earlier. Is there, if so, what is the financial requirement for permanent residents?
That's at the consulate. I don't have the requirements for consulate. You must go there, but they will ask you for six months' pay statements. But I don't know how much they ask for.
Good afternoon, guys. Okay, guys, I think so the information has been very interesting. And if you have any more questions, you can make them directly to Gabia Den of Meeting or you can visit the Immigrations Office in downtown. You know where is the main circle in town where the two gas stations are in front of each other? The office is just up the hill and behind the right side at the gas station when you go from town to Mexicali. All right. Our next guest speaker is Notario Público number 16, Ruben Contreras. He is the new notary in town, so we are going. You need to have at least 40,000 people in town to get a notary in the town. So congratulations to you for this.
Hi, good morning. How are you today? It's glad to see a lot of beautiful people here. When Roberto, I'll thank you Roberto for your invitation. When Roberto told me that it's going to be here, a hometown meeting, I thought maybe it's going to be 20 people or something like that. So when I see all of you, eh, I'm really nervous. Well, my wife always say to me that I speak a lot. But don't worry, that is in Spanish, not in English. So I will try to be brief. So I do things that it's important to me to let you know. First of all, that I need to practice my English. So, well, thank you. I need to practice a lot of my English. But, well, I see a lot of people that are going to help me today. And maybe my English is going to be a little rusty, but thank you for your, what's the name for? Pensions, yes. But this is going to be the dynamics. Well, there's the other thing that is important to me to let you know. Is the difference between a notary public in the US, specifically in California, and a notary, and a notario público here in Mexico. Eh, what's, what's for me that is important to let you know? Because here in Mexico and the United States, even if the name is singular, was sico, notario público, the duties are different. In the US, a notary public is a person authorized to make, it's like an officer of the state, right? As most of you know, the notary is appointed, the notary in the US is appointed by the state government, the governor or state secretary. His primary role is to serve the public as an impartial witness, right? And when important documents are assigned, the notary also records the documents in a special book. But they not keep, is not keep a copy of the documents. And his duty is only like a witness. Well, eh... To become a notary in the United States or in the state of California, you must complete a six-month course on a study and then an exam. It's very simple because the notary in the United States is a special witness and also records a registered documents that the people, the parties want to, to make that register. And that procedure works very well in an efficient system, a well-organized legal system like the US. Unfortunately, in Mexico it's not that efficient. Someone in Mexico are not listening here, but... That's why a notary, a notario público, that's why a notario público here in Mexico, it's a little more complicated. What's a notario público? A notario público is a special legal, it's an independent legal professional that are entrusted by, by patent by the state executive branch. The notary performs his function in an autonomous way, which stricted adherence to the whole series of legal norms regulated by the Northern Law of California. A notary is entrusted with public faith. Any contracts, legal acts or legal facts that are recorded under their intervention is warranted authenticity, solemnity and legality. What did that mean? I'm not an authority, I'm not an official of the state. I'm like an independent attorney, but I have special duties. I am trusted with public faith. And that's why all the documents that a notary signed or all the people, the parties go to a notary and sign it with, what's the word for? Notary, but, well, all the documents signed with the notary, notaries, yes, thank you, are like a legal truth, okay? If that document goes to a court, the judge don't will doubt if the people sign the document or even know what's the documents, the rights or obligations are contained in the document. So it's like a legal truth. So what is, I need, or what I do to be here like a notary? Well, a notary in Mexico needs to be a lawyer. This needs to be a lawyer, cannot be any other professionals. It needs to be a lawyer. Eh, well, I had to have an extensive knowledge of legal law, property law, tax law, business law, family law, immigration law, foreign investment law and some other special fields of the law. A notary is a specialist of a lot of laws in Mexico. A notary practice with guidance of the appointed notary in accordance to the state law. To be, to be a notary, you need to practice, or the notary has to practice with another, another notary about three or 10 years. I initiated my practice in 2010 and made my first exam in 2013. And, well, in October of the past year, I made my final exam to be, to be a notary. So to approve, two parts of the exam, practice and oral by a mixed commission of appointed notaries, magistrates and representatives of the state executive branch. So my final exam is, I need to prove to the state that I have the, all the knowledge, all the knowledge of that laws to work as a notary. But it's important to remember that I'm not depend of even judicial or executive, any part of the government here in Mexico. But I have special duties. So it's not the same, a notary public in the US than a notary public in Mexico. But it's okay, it's a good translation that you can say me a notary, it's no problem. In Mexico, a notary's main functions include listen to all party needs, the independent way, both parties go to a notary and the notary has to advise them, to check what are his needs, to prepare the documents, the legal documents that is important or that needs that parties, that people. The difference between an independent lawyer and a notary is the notary has the responsibility to certify that documents. He's the only authorized to certify a contract or a legal act or a legal fact that all parties need to, to have. And also, that's important that the notary preserve and repudies all the documents that are granted with him. So if you need a second copy of the document, maybe you had your will and you lost your will, there's no problem because you can go with the notary and the notary can give you another copy of the, can repudies all the documents that he has. So most commonly, notaries documents, agreements and services are matters of power of attorney, wills, real estate and personal property transfer, constitution, incorporation, civil and commercial companies, warranty contracts, trusts, notaries protocols, condominiums, judicial succession, succession by before notary, judicial sale, tax settlements, related, obviously related with the real estate, lease, partnerships, bailment, session of rights, deposit transfer of agreements, land rights, service agreements, promise of sales and several other documents or contracts, enumerated contracts. Those are like the most common, common documents that people need to do with a notary. And some other common documents are some letters like certification of name with witness. Maybe, well, here in Mexico is common to, a people has documents with, for example, Maria and Emma only. So you can go with a notary with two witnesses and make a letter that both names are from the same person. Responsible treasury, maybe with a minor, are registered in hacienda. His parents can make a letter that say to hacienda that they are going to be responsible for any omissions of the taxes. Travel permission for minors, that's a common document because here in Mexico needs to, a minor is going to travel, has to have his authorization for his parents. Can go with a notary to make that letter. Migratory documents, permissions for minors, for passport, visa, centry and economic solvency, for example. Some requests or facts can make it with the notary, some notification, formal request, deterioration of a property, maybe if a property is, what's the name for?
The property is falling down?
It's falling down or something like that. You can, a notary can go to see that and record it in a document. Construction or indications of property or any other material facts not contrary of the law and that not correspond exclusively to an authority. Well, eh... That's, all the, for the most common documents that you can make with a notary. Maybe the wills or the, or the trusts are going, the most common that you will need. So if you have any doubts about it, I will left my cards, my business cards with Roberto. You can send me an email. I will be here permanently for 78, March 78. I will be here permanently, but my office is going to be in La Placita in front of the bank. And, well, anything that you need, I can be in time. Yes? Okay, my phone number is... My personal phone number is 646. 148. 3986. 3986. Y 646, 148, 3986. Y el número de oficina es 686577... 2119. Roberto va a tener muchos de mis tarjetas, si alguien los necesita, por favor, a Roberto. ¿Sí?
Solo para clarificar... Lo siento.
Bueno, quiero presentar a mi joven asistente, Bruno. Es mi seis años. Va a vivir en mi casa y es también mi esposa, Gabriela, es también un abogado.
Mi pregunta es, hay una población mayor aquí y la gente está muriendo. Y nos han dicho que tenemos que obtener copias de nuestros certificados de nacimiento y certificados de matrimonio traducidos en español y luego notarios. ¿Es esto algo que podrías hacer por nosotros?
Sí, pero no es necesario notar. Es importante que tengas tus documentos traducidos en español. Pero si algo sucede, puedes ir al notario para hacer, no sé, tal vez sesión de derechos o algo así. Pero los documentos no necesitan ser notarios. Solo traducidos. Bueno, otra cosa importante es que debe ser un puso. Es legalizado, pero no un documento notario.
También.
En México es legal. Sí, el puso es un documento legal para usar aquí en México. Cualquier documento, un documento de inversión, si es un puso, es legal en México.
Necesito una clarificación.
Sí.
Mi esposa y yo tenemos propiedad aquí. Queremos ser capaces de dejarlo a nuestros hijos. ¿Vamos a ustedes a tener el derecho, o vamos a un abogado a tener el derecho dibujado y luego venir a ustedes a hacerlo notar?
Bien, buena pregunta. ¿Wills? No necesitas ir a un abogado primero. Puedes ir al notario y el notario hace todos los necesidades, toda la procedencia. No necesitas ir primero a un abogado.
Gracias. ¿Cuál es el costo?
Depende del tipo de derecho. No tengo aquí el costo o los costos. Voy a enviar un correo electrónico con todos los costos, Roberto. Porque es difícil dar un precio o un costo porque todos los casos no son singulares. Así que primero necesito estudiar todos los casos y hacer mi estimación.
Si tienes un derecho en el estado y dice que tienes propiedad y algo así, ¿puede beneficiarte de eso? ¿Y ese derecho?
El derecho en los Estados Unidos y también en México son válidos en ambos países. Pero el problema es que no hay resolución o sentencia de los Estados Unidos sobre una propiedad aquí en México puede ejecutarse. Así que es recomendado, es mejor si ustedes hacen su derecho aquí en México también.
Si tenemos un documento americano que necesita nuestra firma de testigo, entonces voy a ustedes a testificar ese documento, ¿es aceptable en los Estados Unidos? Con su firma.
Sí, es aceptable. Pero ese documento necesita ser traducido por un oficial. Traducido, sí.
¿Antes puedes testificar nuestra firma?
Sí, antes. Antes, y ambos documentos son... Voy a darte ambos documentos, pero voy a cerrar mi seguro y firmar el que necesites en inglés.
¿Cuándo van a estar en el oficio aquí, cuál es la fecha?
Es el 27 de marzo. El 27 de marzo.
Tenemos nuestro comité herejero y nos han dicho, siendo que tenemos eso, no necesitamos ningún derecho en absoluto. ¿Es eso cierto o falso?
Eso es cierto. Si en el fidel comiso pones un sustituto... Porque la forma en que se hace el fidel comiso, la propiedad, la propiedad directa de la tierra es la banca, pero la banca da el uso de la propiedad a la gente. Así que si estableces un sustituto en ese fidel comiso y la gente muere, el sustituto se convierte en el dueño principal de la tierra. Pero si estableces un sustituto en el fidel comiso.
Cuando llegamos al fidel comiso hace diez años, lo escribimos en español y lo queríamos en inglés, no lo harían.
No.
Así que no entendemos realmente lo que están en esos papeles.
Puedes leerlo a mi oficina y lo leemos juntos y te lo explico.
¿Y hay un costo para este tipo de cosas?
No, si solo es para revisarlo y verlo, no hay costo, no hay cargo. Si es necesario hacer otras cosas, bueno, tendrá un cargo de eso.
Sí, no estoy segura de que no estoy repitiendo esta pregunta, pero necesito alguna clarificación. Estamos en el fidel comiso, pero es el de la tierra. Una confianza mala.
Una confianza mala.
Sí. Si uno de nosotros muere, ¿la propiedad va a la sobreviviente? Nosotros estamos listos como propietarios. ¿Podría clarificar eso para mí?
Bien, en ese caso, necesito estudiar esa confianza mala porque no... No son los mismos documentos. Todas las confianzas mala o todas las confianzas no son iguales. Así que primero necesito estudiar. Roberto, dame algunos documentos de la tierra para iniciar mi estudio. Pero es importante, es importante tener tu confianza individual. Porque es más seguro, incluso puedes poner... ¿Cómo es sustitución? Sustitución de la gente. En la industria, pero es más importante tener tu confianza individual.
A menos que tengas un derecho. Si tienes un derecho mexicano, tienes que tener un derecho individual.
Es malo, es malo. Pero necesito estudiar, necesito estudiar la confianza mala. No es cierto, pero... Es malo tener tu confianza individual. Una de las cosas que tienes que saber incluso si estás en la confianza mala es que tiene una fecha dura del fidel comiso. El fidel comiso se establece de una fecha a otra. Una vez que llega esa fecha, el fidel comiso se extingue. Así que tienes que tener tu propia... Confianza individual. Así que al final tendrás que hacerlo de todos modos. Si no lo haces, estás en el aire. Así que puedes esperar hasta el final del fidel comiso para hacerlo, pero te aconsejo hacerlo antes. Ahora que Rubén está aquí, es un proceso mucho más fácil. No tendrás que conducir a Mexicali, no tendrás que estar allí una, dos, tres, cuatro veces. Aquí puedes hacer todo lo que necesites con Rubén. Así que eso es solo un comentario.
¿Cuál año expira la confianza mala?
2052.
¿2052? Cincuenta años. No hay necesidad de obtener tu individual si estás en la confianza mala hasta que expira en 52. Si estás ahora.
Mi año expira en 2020.
Correcto. Estoy segura de que mi año expira en 2020, solo miré. Estoy bastante segura. Pero bueno, lo que quiero saber es cuánto cuesta el individual.
Necesito estudiar. El costo es difícil para mí hacer una estimación aquí. Es difícil. No puedo, no es como una lista de precios. Es más difícil que eso. Pero todos los precios, todos los cargos de los documentos son regulados por la ley. Así que necesito ver la ley, hacer... Sí, no es difícil porque este tipo de cosas, necesito ver el precio de la propiedad y otras cosas. No es tan simple. Así que prefiero no dar ninguna estimación cuando veo todo. Si quieres ir a mi oficina, estudiará su caso especial y te daré la estimación. ¿De acuerdo? Así que tenemos fidel comisos. En nuestro fidel comiso tenemos a nuestros hijos listos, en caso de que mueran, estando en el océano. Si queremos hacer una cambio para nuestros hijos y ponerlos como parte de la confianza mala, ¿necesitamos una confianza mala o simplemente amendar la existente? Dicho, en lugar de que el dueño sea yo y mi esposa, sea yo, mi esposa y mi hija como ejemplo. ¿Es una nueva o solo un amendamiento? Sí, no necesitas hacer una nueva confianza mala. Puedes hacer... ¿Cuál es el término? Amenaza, sí. Sí, es una procedencia especial, pero no necesitas hacer una nueva. Si no hay más preguntas por el momento, como dice Rubén, nos dará sus tarjetas y pueden ir con él. Tendremos tarjetas en el oficio de servicio de clientes, así que pueden buscarlas allí. Pero realmente recomiendo que tengas dudas, contacten a él en su oficina. Puedes enviarme un correo electrónico. Cualquier duda que tengas, cualquier cosa que necesites para opinar o algo, puedes enviarme un correo electrónico y te responderé lo más pronto posible. Así que gracias por tu tiempo y... Muchas gracias, Rubén. Muchas gracias, Rubén. Hay algo que él no dijo, pero sé que va a ser residente de San Felipe muy pronto. Así que estará viviendo entre nosotros, lo que hace que la vida sea más fácil para todos nosotros. Muchas gracias.